Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
And Alderman Guzekowski is excused.
Please, please rise from Pledge of Allegiance. Hurdon, would you start us off?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from June 6, 2017, as everybody had a chance to go through them. Any questions or comments? Kowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2017.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Upstein.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
First on the docket, we have a council proclamation. The designation of July as Park and Rec Month. Catherine, will you handle that for us, please?
Certainly.
Catch you off guard.
No, that's okay. Certainly. Oh, here. I'm good. Council proclamation number 17-09, designation of July as Park and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Oak Creek, and whereas our parks and recreations are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental in the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Oak Creek recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Oak Creek, introduced at a regular meeting of the common council of the city of Oak Creek held this 20th day of June 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. Any comments, questions from the council? Motion.
We'll move to approve Council Proclamation 17-09, designation of July as Park and Recreation Month.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
We have one public hearing tonight, a code amendment, consider a request for a proposed amendment to Section 17.0313, sub C, to allow licensed tattoo and/or body piercing studios as conditional uses in the B2 community business district. Doug, are you taking that one tonight? Catherine?
Public hearing number one is to consider a proposed amendment to Section 17.0313-sub C, to allow licensed tattoo and/or body piercing studios as conditional uses in the B2 community business district. Date of notice is May 25, 2017.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city, and this is a public hearing and a request to amend the zoning code to allow tattoo license, I'm sorry, licensed tattoo and body piercing establishments as conditional uses in the city's B2 community business zoning district. Currently, the city permits light tattoo and piercing establishments as conditional uses in the B4 highway business district. That's kind of the highest business district, the most intense business district that the city has in its zoning code. That conditional use provision was instituted in the code in 2009, and prior to that time, theoretically, these places, establishments, weren't allowed specifically by the code. And in the run-up to that 2009 text amendment that allowed those as conditional uses in the B4, staff did considerable research as to how these types of uses are regulated in other communities. Also, at that time, the applicant was proposing to operate within the B4 zoning district. So that's really where the council saw fit to locate, populate that type of use as a conditional use in the B4. Since that time, only one business has requested conditional use for that, under that conditional use, and as far as the staff, the planning staff is concerned, we haven't seen any complaints regarding that. I think that they're actually out of the lease space by now, but during its tenure, we did not see any issues arise with the location of that establishment. Staff believes that this type of use does not typically have a high impact in a commercial zoning district as compared to other businesses, and similarly to what was approved in 2009, staff believes that allowing a tattoo and/or body piercing business as a conditional use in the B2 allows the city the ability to control the location, appearance, and operation of that use. Approving this type of use in the B2 zoning district would really have a low impact on the community, also expands the types of uses that are allowed in the B2 district. And I will say, while this is not specific to any one use, there is a user that's potentially interested in opening up a, one of these establishments in an existing B2 zoning district, and this would be a predecessor to that conditional use request. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposal to add tattoo and body piercing establishments as conditional uses in the B2 zoning district, and they have recommended its approval. This being a public hearing, I would ask anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to fill out an appearance form, once your name is called, please proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is open.
Thank you, Doug. And it is a public hearing. We will make three calls, as Doug stated. First call. Second call. Third call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to Item 6, consideration of the ordinance, allowing the licensed tattoo and body piercing establishments in the conditional use in the B2 community district. This time, I'll open it up to council. Questions, comments? Seeing none?
Sorry, then, I just, one question.
Sorry, Ken.
Then I don't remember if I read it before. But B2 is used in how many areas of the city?
It's quite a bit more selective because it's not, it's a community business zoning district, so it's not, for instance, the minimum lot sizes are, it's a lot more flexible in terms of how it can relate to smaller commercial areas. I can't give you a number.
It's not uncommon?
It's not uncommon, no. There are plenty of B2 areas, certainly not to the extent of B4, but there are some areas.
You're typically going to see small establishments like that in B2?
Typically, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Doug, just out of curiosity, does the B2 district, does it have anything to do with residential above, like at the marketplace?
No, I mean, marketplace is kind of a special circumstance. It was a planning and development which allows for the live-work units above the stores. So that typically would not be, well, we do allow for certain caretaker's quarters for a certain percentage of the business. It's not typically something that you'd see in our B2, our commercial zoning districts. It's more appropriate now in some of our planning and development. So we just, the zoning code really wasn't set up for that, wasn't terribly common during, I guess, the decades under which it was written, and it just hasn't really dealt very well with vertical mixed use at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion.
We'll move to approve ordinance number 2858, amending Section 17.0313-C to allow licensed tattoo and/or body piercing establishments as conditional uses in the B2 community business district.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
New business, consider a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation promissory notes. Bridget?
Good evening. So on February 7, 2017, the council adopted a finance development agreement with Emerald Row II LLC and Emerald Row Holdings. That development agreement spoke about a $4.5 million grant to Emerald Row and the $2.75 million loan that we'll discuss in the next item. So both of those items were contingent upon a MAV for Phase II, as well as a MAV for Phase III. So all of that is what brought us here today, where we have gone out for the issuance of the funds to give them to the developer. We went through our normal process in terms of the bond rating. Moody's rated the city on these short-term notes in AA2 rating, again, which has been, we've been consistent the past 10 years on that rating. They also reaffirmed that AA2 for our existing debt. So they give you a rating on your new debt and then the existing. So that is positive news to continue that rating. Our sound financial policies and management procedures were a part of why we are maintaining that rating. So tonight, we have the $4.5 million grant here, which we added in the capitalized interest, and these are both related to your Phase II and Phase III, and the guaranteed value. So we have a short-term note, which is our typical procedure, where we then expect the project to build, and once we have increment from that project, we will move these short-term notes into long-term bonds. So I have Paul Thompson here from HSE with the good news on the interest rates and the sale that occurred today.
Thank you. I'll be real brief. In your packet, in the past, we had estimated that the issue size was going to be $5,250,000 at an interest rate of 3.5%. The actual interest rate came in at 3%, which drove down the amount of capitalized interest we needed, which drove down the issue size. So the agenda item before you tonight is for $4.9 million instead of $5,250,000. When you compare the total principal and interest from the estimate to the final for tonight, the total savings is just slightly over $204,000 from where we started. The market improved dramatically from where we were the first time to today, particularly in taxable interest rates, and that worked to your advantage. Any questions I can answer?
Paul, any feedback you took from the market's reception of this issuance?
Real good, real positive. You know, Oak Creek name is good. There's been a lot of press about Drexel Town Square, so a lot of people know about it, even institutions like insurance companies who, and banks who typically buy the taxable notes. So, no, real good acceptance in the marketplace.
Anyone else? Anything? Seeing none? Motion.
We'll move to approve Resolution 11831-062017, authorizing the issuance and sale of $4.9 million taxable general obligation promissory note series 2017A.
Kowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item eight, consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sales of $2,750,000 worth of taxable general obligation promissory notes.
So Item 8 is virtually the same as Item 7. We are dealing with the $2.75 billion loan to Emerald Row II and III. The exception with this piece of debt in front of you is that this $2.75 loan is first going into a privately-held note with First Business Bank tonight. This will then be refunded at your July 18 council meeting into long-term debt. We are doing this to gain the flexibility to structure the debt in equal annual payments, matching the reimbursement amount from the developer, which was stated and worked through in the development agreement.
Questions?
Just a comment for the rest of the folks who weren't able or hadn't been a participant. We had the Matt Ranka and his firm, and Rick Barrett and his, or Rick Barrett's financial representative in the building last Tuesday presented their preliminary concepts for the Phase II building, which were incredibly appealing and a very dynamic design. I think he'll be very happy with the product. He did, Joel did say that their first phase is 99.4, 4.6% already leased, which essentially means it's got one probably unit left. Incredible reception for their product. They do a great job, and we're looking forward to getting them going on Phase II.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else? Motion.
We'll move to approve Resolution 11832-062017, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,750,000 of taxable general obligation promissory note.
Kowski, a second. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a resolution approving a service agreement between Drexel Town Square Owners Association and the city of Oak Creek for Drexel Town Square in the second district. Andrew, are you taking this one?
Sure, Mayor, I can handle that one. Thank you. With the passing of the remaining parcels in the DTS development from West Park into, I guess, really private hands, from One West Drexel, the declarant, One West Drexel, will be changing the responsibility of upholding the declarations of the development, will be changing hands to Drexel Town Square Owners Association, of which the city is a part of. With the agreement before you, a rather simple agreement and an attached map, and I know most of you are familiar with that map, just really outlines the public service responsibilities we have for the properties in DTS. I will say that I was very happy to see that this was in the works. Early on, I was curious as to how we could capture the relationship moving forward, but I'd also note that the amounts included, which I'll get to, for reimbursement to the city for their services really help offset those interim, interim public services that are captured, we need to capture inside of our tax increment districts, which we've been talking about. So this is a cost recovery method for those services. The agreement calls for a five-year agreement and then an annual renewal period thereafter, unless, you know, either party would object to such. And you'll see the schedule for payment of services begins in 2017. Cost range over the next five years of reimbursement to the city from about $39,000 to about $44,500. I should also state that when we, the original agreement that was put before me had a cost recovery for the city of about $16,000, so we really elevated the contribution of the Drexel Town Square Owners Association to the city on an annual basis for the services we are providing to, I'd say, you know, somewhat extraordinary services provided to the residents and business owners in this, in this development. So there is some cost recovery there. Other than that, Mayor and council, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Like I said, a rather straightforward agreement. We have been doing the maintenance as provided in this agreement and on the map as shown for, since the beginning anyway, so we are memorializing the relationship moving forward here with DTS Owners Association and the city.
Everybody take a look at the map, get familiar with it as to our responsibility, their responsibilities. Questions?
Andrew, I have one question. Those fees that we'll be receiving, I'm sure it's been researched, those fees completely offset whatever time and equipment the city has to dedicate for that, you know, those services?
I failed to mention that, Alderman. Thank you for the question. In my comments, I failed to mention that the goal of this was never full cost recovery. Certainly, the, you know, approximating $40,000 gets us closer to where we were at 16. I would say cost recovery is fairly close if we have a very mild winter, but again, the goal was never, never full cost recovery. If you talk to our development partners, they would be quick to remind you as they, as they were me. Typically, these are services that, you know, public works departments in cities provide in their downtowns, absent a business improvement district, which sometimes takes the place of, you know, funding for these types of items. But that was never the goal, but we're, I think we're inching a little closer to, you know, full cost recovery there. But again, it depends on a lot of variable things, such as, you know, the winter we have and items like that, so.
Thank you.
I do have one question, Andrew. It's a five-year contract, correct?
Correct.
As we have built outs to the east of City Hall and to the south and to the west of the library, do those properties come online with this agreement as the association? Does anything change, or is that built in already?
It is built in already. They do come online, per se, but they take the place of, obviously, One West Drexel and until the Owners Association is formally struck, the fees are established as they are here. So we wouldn't be seeing an increase with Emerald Row II coming online or anything along those lines.
After the five-year contract and presuming those buildings are up, do the responsibilities change at all, or is that still public right-of-way in front of those proposed developments?
It is still public right-of-way, and you'll see, we're not doing work on private property. That wouldn't be appropriate for our crews, but this is all included in the right-of-way here, so they come online and we assume those, but if you think about it, there's not too much more to accommodate, you know, other than some terrace cutting that may not exist and that kind of thing. We still have the sidewalks and such in place as they are today, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion.
Lorick moves that the council adopt Resolution number 11826-062017, approving the services agreement between Drexel Town Square Owners Association, Inc., and the city of Oak Creek for Drexel Town Square.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 10, consider a resolution authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations. Bridget, again?
Sir, with the absence of our July 4 council meeting, we will have five weeks between tonight and the July 18 meeting in terms of paying the bills. So as we have done in the past few years, we are asking that we have the approval of the council to go forward and process checks as if we were having a July 4 meeting, and then at the 18th, you will receive two packets of vouchers to be approved.
Motion.
We'll move to approve Resolution 11829-062017, authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Hi.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 11 is the vendor summary report. Please take a look. Any questions? Please direct them to Bridget, so she can answer questions.
Item number eight, just as long as it's on there, as long as it's there, maybe I can ask Mike how Lake Vista's coming along, what kind of progress we see in there? Yes, they are moving along. You'll notice a lot of the structures are now building up above grade. That's the bluff shelters, the beacon, and then the parking overlook, and then, of course, the pavilion. So, and that is some of Prepero's work, or excuse me, some of Edgerton's work under Item 8. They are doing the earthwork for Roche, which is the other contractor, that's the building contractor. But at any rate, you'll notice Item 13 is a payment for Roche construction, so things are moving along out there. Still a lot to go. The paving, you know, of the two large parking areas, all the pathways, some of the specialty paving that will be going around the playground area, none of that has been put in yet, although the preparations are now, the grading, that's all happening. So moving along at an okay pace, we are still behind schedule where we want it to be. Any of that going to be usable this summer, or in the fall, maybe? I would say, depending on when we can get some grass seeded out there, and they will be top-selling quite a bit next week and the week after prepping, then they want to get those areas seeded. So we'll be in a good grass-growing season here, late summer. So I think if that gets established, we can allow people out there, but we're going to be in a state of not-quite-complete late into the fall. So we will have to address how we're going to handle that. We may just discourage people on the site. I'm getting some questions. I would say you can feel safe that that is going to be fully operational in 2018.
Just to add comment to that very quickly, Park and Recs did take a tour down there. I attended with them. Andrew was with us. They're coming along really nicely down there, probably by the end of summer. It looks like it should be, as Mike said, pretty well-built out, but people can get the general vision of it going down there now.
All the structures will be completed by late fall, and the pavilion will just be being completed. They'll have it all enclosed, and they'll be finishing off to the winter, and it'll finish up in the spring.
Greg?
I just had a question on item number two, only because I just got a call from a resident regarding the project that we voted on a few meetings ago for the tree contract, and I believe the beautification was split with Franklin. Is this item in addition to that, or is this a separate project?
This is for the purchase of the trees themselves, so this is not a payment to the contractor.
Okay.
But, right, for the purchase of the trees.
Thank you.
Rich?
Not a question, more of a comment, and actually, a thank you on item number 12, $5,000 to the Oak Creek Community Center Services, Inc., for summer concert sponsorship. Again, this is one of the quality-of-life programs that, you know, make our community such a great one. 14 years ago, the Oak Creek Community Center started the Summer Concert Series with thousands of people attending every summer. Nothing better than going to hear free music and being able to bring your own food and beverage to that event as well. Certainly, it's challenging to put that program on without funding through city celebrations. So, Andrew, I believe you were part of that process after I left the center to make certain that some of those city celebrations dollars were designated for the Summer Concert Series, and for whoever else was involved in that process, just a big thank you. Take a look at the schedule that's out there for this summer. It's going to be a very exciting summer of free music in our community, and actually, which started this past Saturday with the summer solstice. So, comment?
Seeing nothing else? Motion.
And, yeah, big ticket this month or this period, but almost 800K is IKEA away or like this stuff, so. With that said, we'll move to approve the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,472,538.28.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Now, going to health, item number 12 is consider of an ordinance, number 2859, an ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, and 8.10 of the Oak Creek Municipal Code regarding the powers and duties of the health officer, rules, regulations, human health hazards, restaurants, lodging, campgrounds, recreational, tattoo-body-piercing establishments, and retail food establishments. Oh, God, it's a lot, Ann.
It is.
But you can give the explanation. It's kind of driven by the state, so go ahead.
Well, as you know, DHS and DACAP have merged, so we're trying to reflect the changes that have been made to administrative codes and state statutes for that, and also DHS and DSP. And also DHS and DSPS, the Department of Safety and Professional Services, also have merged with the tattoo and body shops. So we want to make sure that our codes and administrative code or state statutes and administrative codes are included in our ordinance. And then we also kind of cleaned up the language, so if it was mentioned in the state statutes or administrative codes, that it wasn't repeated. And we also just did some current practices that are going on and just cleaning up language with it.
Clear on it?
MRAs, Rich?
It's clear as it can be.
Yeah. It is a lot, but I think she summed it up very well. Okay, seeing none, motion?
Kirkowski make a motion that the council adopt ordinance number 2859, an ordinance to repeal and recreate sections 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, and 8.10 of the Oak Creek Municipal Code regarding powers and duties of the health officer, rules and regulations, human health hazards and restaurants, lodging, campgrounds, recreational, tattoo body piercing establishments, and retail food establishments.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Community development, item 13, resolution authorizing the closing on the sale of the property at 8,000 South Market Street to the Waters Senior Living.
Thank you. Boy, a little over a year ago, the council passed a resolution which approved a land purchase agreement with the Waters Senior Living Holdings for the property at 8,000 Market Street, obviously just across the street from the Civic Center. And subsequently adopted an amendment to that purchase and sale agreement with the Waters. During that time, both parties have been working towards a closing as anticipated in July of this year. This resolution authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute those documents which are necessary for the closing. Just for the council's information, the sale price of the parcel is 1.4 million, two and a half acres.
Comments?
Greg?
Just kind of curious, do you know when they're going to start building on the?
Boy, we hope soon. The way it is set up, no, in all seriousness, they are going through their building permit process and they will be getting their building permit simultaneous with closing. So really anytime after closing, they could get going on that.
Yeah, Dan, you're well aware, but just for everyone else, incredible amount of effort on behalf of the city attorney's office, community development, city administrator, finance, engineering, just a ton of staff time spent to get this one over the hurdle. So hopefully signing occurs as planned and we can have a life.
And just let me just go back a little bit further back in history, even this was all made possible by some very strategic thinking about the, our space and how we could best utilize our space and our parking, which freed up that two and a half acres, which in addition to the obvious 1.4 million dollars in sale price, the assessed value of that development is going to be contributing greatly to the success of Drexel Town Square.
Could have been a parking garage.
Could have been a parking garage.
Shifted the building a couple degrees.
Anyone else? Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11836-062017 authorizing closing on the sale of the property at 8,000 South Market Street to the Waters Senior Living Holdings, LLC pursuant to the land purchase agreement.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 14, excuse me, it's authorizing agreements with Milwaukee County relative to the community development block grant program for the years 2018 through 2020. Doug?
Thank you once again, Mayor. The Milwaukee County CDBG program, they administer the program on behalf of the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Milwaukee County municipalities within Milwaukee County, with the exception of the city of Milwaukee and West Ellis, both of whom administer their own program under the current laws, administer those funds on behalf of all the other municipalities in the county. And as part of their administration of that program, they enter into what they call cooperation agreements with their member municipalities. And really, the city's role with respect to CDBG has really transitioned in some of the earlier years from a project-based participation into, and one that utilized some of those funds for home improvement loans, into a more cooperative arrangement whereby now each member municipality doesn't necessarily get a segregated amount of money, but it's all pooled into one pot, if you will, and projects are really competitively applied for as to, you know, across the county and how they meet the criteria of the HUD program. So for instance, I mean, whereas, you know, we could have, Oak Creek could have a project that they could bid for, which was, would have been historically above their allocation, but if it scores high enough, then it could receive funding from that countywide pool subsequently. I mean, the projects in Franklin, projects in Cudahry, all have that same opportunity. Now historically, Oak Creek, and this is a good thing, given that its levels of poverty or its levels of lower incomes aren't as prevalent as some of our neighbors or other municipalities within the county, really doesn't have a lot of the same need that some of those other municipalities do have. So historically, we haven't seen a lot of projects, physical projects be approved from Oak Creek. What it has done though is it has funded some service agencies, whether it be the Food Pantry of the Salvation Army, whether it be Interfaith, whether it be, at some point they funded the Wisconsin Women's Business Initiative Corporation, WIBIC. So there is still a lot of good that helps citizens of Oak Creek and people who, agencies that touch the lives of Oak Creek residents, although we don't specifically have very many direct projects that go through block grants.
Thank you, Doug. Very well summed up, too. Mike?
Historical society eligible?
Again, I mean, it's, would depend on the project and how they could demonstrate that their project benefits low to moderate income people. And I will tell you, as in the past, I mean, the requirements have not gotten any easier. It'd be very difficult and to make that case that it serves primarily a low to moderate income population.
Other questions?
Steve? Doug, how much, how much is, I was looking for this earlier, what's our financial contribution to this?
Oh, there is no financial contribution. It's just a funding formula that's given based on the size of the population of the county and up until, I don't know, my sense of timing is terrible, but let's just say six years ago for kicks, the city would always get an annual allocation of which you could apply for projects based on that allocation. That has since changed in the prior cooperation agreement, now it's all pooled into that one. So there really is no number for Oak Creek. It's just really, the city participates as a member of the kind of coalition of municipalities within the county that taps into that larger pool of money.
Has there ever been a report generated to show what Oak Creek gets out of these, like per three-year contract? Is it just to show what they do in the city?
Well, most of the proj, and I will tell you that during this last three-year cycle, there was no project in Oak Creek that qualified for that. But there were some of these public service agencies that did, for instance, Salvation Army and Interfaith that did provide services to Oak Creek residents, although I don't know that those were segregated out as a specific report.
I guess I might, must be missing something then, because it says here that the use of these funds reduces the amount of funding the city has to provide through the annual budget, so.
Typically, when we did, when we did projects, and we can still do projects, again, we would have to apply for them competitively in the county, the last, and some of the projects that we've done are some of the pavilion bathroom work at Miller Park and, and those are things that, for example, would be typically funded out of city budgets or park impact fees. And to the extent that those are eligible projects under block grants, that can help offset the cost of those projects, although editorial comment coming in here, and many times the cost of doing business within the block grant program, we can't talk tonight, really negated a lot of the cost savings that we were seeing through that program. It's a very administrative intensive program with a lot of very detailed record keeping and wage requirements that have made it, in many cases prohibitive for some of the smaller projects. And that's why the county went to this larger pool, so that they're encouraging the larger projects, because it's just, given the level of administration, it really just didn't make any sense for each municipality to apply for a $30,000 project when, you know, there might be three or four hundred thousand dollar projects out there, which would better suit the program.
Thank you.
Your groups like Interfaith will submit a project and it really becomes a pass-through. It's money then if we were received, given to the city that's then turned around and passed off.
Thank you. Our participation is just a sign-on partner to it, countywide. Any other questions? Not? Motion?
Bill will move to approve resolution 11833-062017 authorizing execution of agreements with Milwaukee County relative to the city's continued participation in the community development block grant program for the program years 2018, 2019, 2020.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 15, consideration of a resolution approving an easement for pedestrian walk with the Drexel Hotel Group for the property at 7980 South Market Street. Doug?
Sure. So as part of our previous agenda items, you authorize kind of execution of documents for the sale of the Waters parcel. You also authorized the agreement for the DTS Owners Association as far as the city's role in maintaining some of the infrastructure. Those two kind of meshed, come together in the sense that that walkway that connects the town square to the Meyer parking lot on the hotel property is, or at least has always been proposed to be the maintenance responsibility of the city. However, when that went in, no easement was granted for that. This provides for that easement and also puts on paper the city's maintenance responsibility for that.
Thank you, Doug. Comments, questions? Seeing none, motion?
Lurk moves that the council adopt resolution number 11834-062017 approving an easement for pedestrian cross access with the Drexel Hotel Group, Inc. for the property at 7980 South Market Street.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Brings us to engineering. Item 16, consider a motion for a contract with R.A. Smith National to provide engineering services along Phase Three route of IKEA Way. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back on February 2nd of this year, the council approved a second amendment to the TIF number 12 Finance Development Agreement with, for, related to the IKEA project. That amendment in part approved installation of water main along the Phase Three alignment of IKEA Way, and that is on the graphic shown before you. Also may be familiar with this, we've used this in the past, in fact, it still refers to Project Badger, which was the code name for IKEA. So Phase One is the southern portion, which was constructed in 2016 and that served the school, that's the yellow and the red combined. The green is Phase Two, and that is what's under construction now, should be completed within three weeks from now. And then the subject of tonight is the Phase Three alignment, which is the blue, which would take us a little bit further north and then heading westward finally to an intersection with 27th and NML Way. And so with the capacity that remained under the original agreement, the recommendation was that water main be installed, and that was approved. So we had approached R.A. Smith to ask them about a proposal for doing the design of the water main, and they did provide a proposal, $39,880. Our recommendation then would be that council awards this work to R.A. Smith. They are very familiar with the project, working on the original phases, and it's got a somewhat intricate scope. We feel that they can, they can do this work probably cheaper than other consultants that might bid on the work, and they could complete it in a timely manner. Like to be out to bid, bids late summer and then have the work awarded and construction fall into winter. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Andrew?
Mayor, can I just add to that? I wanted to just remind you, kind of pulling all this together, this, the ability to move forward with this project was really enabled by the partnership with IKEA in amending that development agreement a few meetings ago. I believe the engineering estimate, I don't want to take the time to bring it up, it's north of 400,000 for the water piece out to 27th Street. So without their willingness to continue to partner with the city, we would be finding a different way to fund that dollar amount and then some in addition to just the water. So I just wanted to bring that up and, you know, remind everybody of the, I don't want to say necessarily generosity of the developer, but just the relationship that we forged with IKEA to enable access to the city of those funds.
That is a very good point, Andrew, and to point out that this phase of the development, so to speak, with the water main is really ahead of schedule. We did not anticipate it going in as soon as we did, so that is a good thing for the overall general area of the development there. Ken?
I didn't think of it before, Mike, and maybe there's a logical explanation. This is for design work for water main, how come we're not doing sewer at the same time?
You know, part of this agreement and as the city administrator alluded to, was the willingness of IKEA to participate in this. IKEA would not benefit from any sanitary sewer going in along that alignment.
That'd be NML's problem?
So to speak, yes. This completes a loop, gives us a secondary feed to IKEA and to the school for that matter. So a very important piece of infrastructure.
Engineering has been in early discussions with Northwestern Mutual on placement of that sewer and other technical arrangements that need to be made, but that is outside, Alderman, of the, you know, the original scope of dollars, I guess you could call it in the IKEA agreement, that will be something we'll have to strike with from a timing and maybe a funding component with Northwestern Mutual directly.
If, Mike, county parks are as happy, no small critter issues? You know what kind I'm talking about?
We have to take this in steps.
Okay.
So we, yes, we expect to be in communication with them later this week, I guess, pending on the action on this item tonight.
Greg?
Question, maybe just a comment, just because I got a lot of calls and questions, mostly from parents of the school there regarding the street continuation. I mean, is this, once the water mains in, is this kind of a good sign as far as the street eventually going in? Is it clearing up, working with the county to go through the park, making it easier for the street to go in?
I would say that the answer to that is yes. When they hear that we are moving forward with the water main, I in part expect them to ask if there's a different alignment. We don't expect to be too receptive to that request, so this will kind of forge the way that this is the alignment. I do know that NML has been in touch with the county already, so they've seen this. Timing wise, I don't know that they expected that water main was going in this year yet.
And Mike, we might strategize here and just give Alderman Lurk the DPRC number directly for his constituents then, too? That might be helpful.
Suggestion? Oh, you could do the work at night and nobody would see it.
The elevators probably.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, motion? Seeing none, motion.
Al Oracle, motion that the council enter into a contract with R.A. Smith National, Inc. in the amount of $39,880 to provide engineering design services for the water main extension along the Phase 3 route of IKEA Way.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 17, consideration of a water main easement between HSI at Drexel Ridge and the City of Oak Creek. Mike, that's you again.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is for a 25-foot wide public water main easement for the water main that is being installed to serve the Drexel Ridge apartment complex. The water main generally follows the alignment of the private roads throughout the development. There is no public road right of way throughout the development. These are private roads. The storm sewer is private, even the sanitary sewer is private. However, the water main needs to remain public, and the easement provides the real estate, the right of the city to enter upon that real estate, to install, maintain, replace water main as needed.
Motion.
Kirkowski make a motion to council adopt resolution number 11820-062017, a resolution approving 25-foot water main easement by and between HSI Drexel Ridge LLC and the City of Oak Creek.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Takes us to licensing. Before I turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski, I just want you to be aware, we do have a speaker on item 27 that's requested to speak. Last item for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the license committee met on June 9, 2017. Minutes are attached. Recommendations are as follows. Item 18, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Kevin Archambeau, agent, on behalf of the Oak Creek Celebrations Commission for the 4th of July event to be held at various locations throughout the city on July 4, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
19, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Bonnie Ammon, agent, on behalf of the American Diabetes Association Tour de Cure, event to be held on July 22, 2017, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Following items were received after the license committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 20, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 11 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
21, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a change of premise to the 2017-18 Reserve Class B Combination License issued to Sarah Baker, Agent Za Man 3 LLC DBA Pizza Man Oak Creek, to include the parklet area on Town Square Way with issuance subject to city engineering approval, city engineer approval, consistent with the final approval of the special privilege permit.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
22, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a change of premise to the 2017-18 Reserve Class B Combination License issued to Sarah Baker, Agent Za Man 3 LLC DBA Pizza Man Oak Creek, 7978 South Main Street, to include an extension of premise into Drexel Town Square for the following events. Dog Days at Drexel, July 15, MilwaukeeFood.com Food Truck Tour, June 21, August 2, August 30, September 20, Fall Festival, October 21, and Winter Festival, February 17, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
23, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a change of premise to the 2017-18 Class B Beer, Class C Wine License issued to Robin Koshvarov, Agent Valentine Cafe LLC DBA Valentine Cafe, 7981 South Sixth Street, to include an extension of premise into Drexel Town Square for the following events. Dog Days at Drexel, July 15, MilwaukeeFood.com Food Truck Tour, on June 21, August 2, August 30, September 20, Fall Festival, October 21, and Winter Festival, February 17, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
24, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a change of premise to the 2017-18 Reserve Class B Combination License issued to Kristen Idol, Agent Belair Cantina Oak Creek, Inc. DBA Belair Cantina Oak Creek, 410 West Town Square Way, to include an extension of premise into Drexel Town Square for the following events. Dog Days at Drexel, July 15, MilwaukeeFood.com Food Truck Tour, June 21, August 2, August 30, September 20, Fall Festival, October 21, and Winter Festival, February 17, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
26, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a temporary Class B Beer License to Sarah Corso, agent, on behalf of the Oak Creek Public Library Foundation, Inc., for the Second Annual Hogwarts Reunion to be held on July 29, 2017, at the Oak Creek Civic Center and Library with a waiver of fees.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak. And we're at 27, Mayor. Would you like to read it first, and then we'll ask Arden to... I will do that. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B Beer slash Class B Wine License to Kristen Kowaleski, agent, on behalf of the Oak Creek Tourism Commission, for a beer garden event to be held at Aben Shyne Park from August 10, 2017, through August 13, 2017. Arden, would you like to come up?
Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I had a number of questions on this dealing with the parks. Aben Shyne Park, we just, as item number, proclamation, item number four, we designated it as a park and recreation month. Are we going to have now a park and not only alcohol but drug months sponsored by the city? My first question is, the Health Department has rules, and so does the state, to serve items. Does this agent require the training that's necessary to have this kind of license?
Yes, they will be, bartender's license will be issued, and the Health Department, if food is served there by a vendor, the city probably won't touch it, but if it's served by a vendor, it'll all be inspected just like any event in the city.
This again raises the question, why does the city, in the name of Parks and Recreation, hire a tourism director and pay for their licenses? Nobody paid for my licenses. I had to pay for everyone myself. In fact, I can't even afford the $80 every two years.
She's just the agent. She's on the license by name.
How's that?
Whether she bartends or not, somebody has to hold that license in name, so she's just holding it in name, very similar.
They don't have the requirement for the...
Somebody, on behalf, the bartenders are licensed.
Yes.
On behalf of the city, but somebody has to be listed as the agent, so Kristen's being licensed as the agent. Doesn't mean she can run out...
So the agent itself doesn't have to go through that?
She's licensed, doesn't mean she can run out.
Well, usually you have to pay money, and this, I'm afraid that this is going to be come out of the tax money.
Arden, it's just for this event, she can't run up the Applebee's and become a bartender with it.
I don't know all the rules, but it just seems that with the problem we have of drugs, and especially with our parks, would you like to play a game of baseball with half-inhibited individuals running around?
That would be Miller Park.
I mean, to me, that's unfathomable. I could see this happening, not only at Aben Shyne Park, but at Lake Mr. Park, because the tourism commission individual that we've hired has to have something to do. They've got to have events, and since the library already arranged it, and I recognize that the Hogwarts are questionable group to begin with, understand that they had a great, a great problem with that thing in Lake Park here, a year, a couple of years ago, and we are asking for trouble. I certainly expect the council to not approve this type of expenditure of tax funds.
Thank you very much, Arden. Just to clarify a couple of points. First of all, it is a temporary use. It's a one-time event going on. It's actually family-focused, as much of the county parks is taken on, going back to the nature of having music, entertainment, refreshments at a central location, which happens to be a park. So we're giving it a shot in that regard. Secondly, just to address the drugs, the city is not promoting any drug use in any way, shape, or form anywhere within our borders or anywhere outside our borders for that matter. Again, we're hoping to provide place for the citizens and the visitors to go and entertain themselves for a weekend. That's all that's about. Questions, Ken?
And just some commentary on the, Kristen was kind of charged with, obviously organizing some of these events, and specifically somewhere else besides terms of all the spending for the tourism commission. So Aben Shyne being a, obviously a center of all activity for residents in the city is a logical place to stage one of these events, and she was, obviously specifically asked, I'm sure she's tried to schedule around baseball activities and stuff like that. High school season will be over by then, and we'll be...
And again, we are trying to activate the entire city, and sooner or later we'll be activating Lake Park. Doug?
A couple of things. I mean, as was borne out by your recent adoption of the strategic plan, I mean, these types of events and bringing a really an active focus to the community was a very high priority from among the, kind of the reviews that have taken place as part of the strategic plan, both by the council and by the public. So this really is an extension of that and really implements a major component of your strategic plan and as a critical success factor. Just worth reiterating that Kristen's position as destination marketing specialist and the activities of the Tourism Commission is funded through hotel room tax, not by the general fund, repeat, not by the general fund. And it may surprise people to know that there actually was a beer garden in Oak Creek in a county park a few years ago. At Falk Park, they had a traveling beer garden. So, and I think some of the perceptions with what beer gardens are and what they are not, I think, are not quite borne out when you see the frequency and the, quite honestly, the really good reception that they've had in some of the other parks, not only in the county, but in some of the other municipalities throughout this county.
Thank you for that clarification. That is very important that you stated that, that that does come from tourism money. So thank you for that, Doug. Appreciate that. Mayor? Steve?
Just quickly want to point out in our proclamation tonight, it does say, paragraph four, increased tourism, so obviously having a beer garden will help with the increased tourism, bring folks from all over into Aben Shyne Park, and intend to be totally lighthearted with the next comment. Paragraph three says, improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, so I'm thinking that would work, too. So I made the motion, if there's any other...
Was that in motion form, or did you just read it?
Well, I did make the motion when I read it.
You did.
If I need to make it again, I can do that.
Could you just be clear?
Sure.
Okay. I'm getting older. Refresh my memory. Kirkowski make a motion to grant a temporary Class B Beer slash Class B Wine License to Kristen Kowaleski, agent, on behalf of the Oak Creek Tourism Commission, for a beer garden event to be held at Aben Shyne Park from August 10, 2017, through August 13, 2017.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Before we go to closed session, I'd like to go to item 31, the addendum. I trust you all have it. Take care of that before we go in. So item 31 is to consider a resolution, rescinding resolution number 11179120611, and subsequent policies approved by the common council on July 21, 2014, October 7, 2014, February 2, 2016, and reinstating the investment policy for the City of Oak Creek. Is that you, or is that White Barb's here?
Both of us.
Okay.
We don't want to have to wait through closed sessions, but City Treasurer Barb Gukkenberger and myself worked on updating the investment policy. So we have a very wordy resolution, because it turns out over the past few years, the common council has been formally, or formally, approving the investment policy and the amendments, but there were resolutions hanging out there. So we are rescinding the prior resolutions and restating with the new or updated policy that's in front of you. So the investment policy gets updated, or has historically been updated annually, and the finance committee looks through the changes that Barb and I have worked through. So the policy in front of you was looked at by finance in February. It has two new documents that are attached, one being a portion of the state statutes as it pertains to investments, and another that is the designated city officials and our procedures. What Barb and I found through reviewing the policy yet again is that we have become incredibly wordy in the policy and have stated the state statutes word for word in many places, and were quite redundant in explaining some of our procedures. So instead of making the policy extra lengthy, we just added it as attachments and then referred to those attachments. So in a very brief rundown, in the introduction, we stated that the investment policy is now going to be reviewed every other year, or sooner if necessary. We feel that we are in a good place now with the number of times that we have updated this policy, that we are happy where it's at, and we're going to keep monitoring how it's working for our investment purposes. We, in the statement of purpose, just minimalized it a little bit, delegation of authority. We had put in the policy originally that we would bring any of the investment agreements to you by July, but by removing the word "July" and just making it annually gives us some more flexibility in terms of bringing that before council. We also removed the detailed description of procedures and attached it. Under permitted investments, we again removed detailed language from the state statutes and attached it. Same thing under maturities. Safekeeping and custody, there was more redundant language and information that's in the state statutes. Under the investment advisor, broker, dealer section, we took out the procedures again, removed more redundant language on reporting and maturities, which were stated in multiple sections of the policy. And we added language that the investment individuals that are working with the city are required to sign an agreement stating that they will abide by the policy and return it. Normally, we would just show proof that we have given them and that they've acknowledged that they've received the policy, but we're just formalizing that a little bit here. And then under reporting, we added language... Normally, we would just show proof that we have given them, and that they've acknowledged that they've received the policy, but we're just formalizing that a little bit here. And then under reporting, we added language regarding the current process and the reports that the city treasurer is doing, and added language requiring the investment individuals in their reporting to us to give us the quality rating of each of the investments. So we've been seeing that quality rating in the annual reports from these investment individuals, but we now want to see it monthly in their reporting, so we made that mandatory for the policy. Under procedures, we took out the procedures, in procedures, and put it as an attachment, and then obviously added a section listing those attachments. That's a summarized version, if you can believe it.
Hey, questions? Comments? Anything?
Nope, a very esoteric, eye-gazing work, but necessary nonetheless.
That was more interesting than Mike.
So, but it does provide, obviously, valuable oversight, and we appreciate your work.
Mike, anything? No, I, I mean, we were there, I was there when they put it in, too, and it's a lot. Leave it at that. Barb, do you have anything you want to say? No. Okay, motion?
I'll move to per resolution 11830-062017, rescinding resolution number 11179-120611, and the subsequent policies approved by the common council on July 21, 2014, October 7, 2014, and February 2, 2016, and restating the investment policy for the City of Oak Creek.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Take us back to item 28, it is to consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to consider a memorandum of understanding with Oak Creek Development Partners LLC regarding the property at 2201 East College Avenue. House President, Gail.
Thank you, Dan. Consider, again, we'll move to then convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to consider a memorandum of understanding with Oak Creek Development Partners LLC regarding the property at 2201 East College Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Thank you, we will now convene into closed session, and we will resume when we are finished up and ready to go. Oracle, second. There is no action required. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Alderman, Duke Neack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And we're just looking for adjournment. Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 30, there is no action to be taken, we're just looking for adjournment. Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.